Kung ilang kabasengel moraro ul Senator Sangortiang, ilang kabasengel eor ga eh floor leader il di giler ta report emralme, magsulalme January git. Merengasule ti aman namulei, tendinga riigel makloa, bulgultuul giler moadresera al kabasengi. Mak merengasule eh iagolertial momong 50 o himek pulsin, ilal second special session ra 12 to olbir alulau, itel senators el mora order. Claire Kamura Ulkon.
Senator Lencir Basilius.
Oi.
Senator Cecilil Eldebel.
Oi.
Senator Gubaiigikua Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Brian Mlayre.
Martiang.
Senator Sikfit Bai Nagamura.
Oi.
Senator Enlati Pedro. Senator Tichey Mrur Monsau. Senator Mark Eblaw Rudim.
Oi.
Senator Kasugi El Tapsoyino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabelwal.
Oi.
Senator Salvador Sadoy Talams.
Oi.
Senator Masonir Evan Luips.
Oi.
Floor Leader Kray Mariur.
Oi.
Presidento Conz Baulis. Acting President Stevenson Chek Wattei.
Oi.
Acting President Narya Korum.
Narya Korum mong sedemom malmormauree de ah Senator Monsau, ah Senator Pedro, ma President Baulis ah excuse for the session. Unitra floor leader bol o tigayri gidauree de la kabasengi, floor leader.
Mr. Presidente, malungil kabasengel mergaau marveklade bodalmorma dudora IRAM 4 ra calendar indiaga ngara, national. VAI IRAM 5 ra measures na presidential me ngaria presidential communication 12-67, tianga nomination ra, Mr. Yoviter Youngonmodala board ra PPUC. Imnou 3 ma dudora appropriate part calendar, dudora IRAM 6 indiregal tianga IRAM 6. IRAM 7 ngara, igel communication nasibital blind May. Ngaria eh, SOD communication 12-19 tianga uvaishal giler latyal, tal rejection latyal supplemental budget. Tigil modala galpri. VAI IRAM 8 ra standing committee report indiaga ngaria 2 IRAM 9 ra, ah, special committee report, conference committee report, ma move adapt standing committee report, conference committee report 12-1, giler Senate Bill 12-25, SC3, SC2, CD1.
Se git sel motion amnaseen, ma unitra Chairman Awaisan Minz Senator Rudim bol giva report tiyal conference committee.
Um, I'm sorry Mr. President, malungil kabasengel marveklad. Vaitamlam 8-11 malbonra 3 klor al kabasengela, al kabasengela May 2025. Mr. President, tiang conference committee report number 12-4. Sorry, sel Senate Bill number 12-25, SC3, SC2, ibleda reject 3-11. Badamno reject ta igel ottila House, ndaitang wadi blortira ka igel ottila President ra supplemental budget. Tiyal conference committee report, our result ra meetingin gido bongela House, mle conference, wa blo da girtmakla conference, ma aduduu, wa se igel blo da awanar gini, luagdoski shiriun bagara da gaigets. Mktaranal madada report ah, amo otin se gida tetra uruol, milgatmokra ladsins, wa se ra House masenet, amo goongei, agagidet, tegidet tetrela budget ra supplemental budget ra 2025. Ma aktimo, godoganya reporta Mr. President, le godamnaxi roguim, godamdogani roguim, etiya report available tiyal blind for anybody interested ngara Baulis, you know, kapirini. Ya diswaga loaisa Mr. President, la say, aiel gukon tila Senate ra tokora policya milgatmok, sera omsodela tokora rate making process la PUC. Ma direkal gumlo goongea Senate, bongela House, ma President, aielle tokora 411 mora aradospeerini, ma PPUC subsidy, malmootl bevil, ma igel gukon tila President, gukon dasa se koututrel mora executive brancha particularly Ministry of State, malmootl bevil. Ah, tiang Mr. President, yo otila say, godamnawitsa la agreement bongela House, mong wa bodagnyernirol bongela House ra underside, ewutmukleg modarsa mal obisa President mo for his consideration. With that, Mr. President, ke drogul, adala committee ra Awaisan Minz amnarsee, direkal nitra, te alal mora bevir al member, sa ngukol soli modoeel, ma gukibolsada igel bevir atantengi tiang, eh, kiel draalala al morti, sola Mr. President.
Sola Senator Rudim, aulala open el mora, pamentangil di senator el altain. O naixra Senator Aldabel.
Lo President, sorry ti'al, le otet President ak mal, uteltame mal merengasulem ra wungil lider sibragau, ibseemel aluliguwa ora wungil lider sibragau in communication, bongela President rigida Baulis. Imnosepil dudora, asterisk sel urgency ra te ilurere dat tiagidel supplemental budget. Ungiuse President takdireka mal merengasulela Chairman rigida Rudim, adirekal Chairman ra House, ah, gukulte ra House, ah, taqal, ah, ra lulgo. Adirekal mulle wungil lider sibertile, lo godulbaba wungil spiruitra compromise, imnosepe edel goongea ta igidel, eh, person, eh, nambo CD1 ngara, ah, madadra el altain. Wungilarmuda President, el vaygeldi lu Chairman, il naseen, ungulgiuse el agreement rigida, godamnosepe edel goongea igegidel, el betogol wungilngesu, il se el gukmoso paquetria, ah, adabelau ra, atogora dengi, especially igel subsidyl mora, olingila aral ma suwer ma dengi, adirekal ngari se igidel policy, ah, a change, il dalilia alse tiang, al walbol, ah, korra ameskidagaila in il girela, amatmaklela tarif ra PPUC, mindega dil, goradimo utuy ra igel, expenditure titile dil ngalo daktake, edega goradwungil basisirini it oltovda ra tarifel nyaa, se el marullin malmo, omiringla arala tarif, ah, igagidel rate rap dengi, maralma, malmo omiringla aral apord. Diregal wungilarmuda girdel se igidel, al guknesu, il mulora, ah, senior citizens, tiriga igel sel 481, nyaa igal naobregal, teral klabase, dorera aqualdiv ra igabla blue, er adadwaga wadi logeringi, especially tiriga igidel retirees. Wungilarmuda el alaklu gukolmon, eh, guktestirire, tas edel gukmania wungilais, ta il loaisa tik, naseen, aiigidel guknesu ra, ah, mar seniors, amnanga namatmakal morti. Direkal wungilarmuda igel guk, ah, ngesu mora tokora, ah, sports, ma igel gukmalngaseo ra organization etiyal emralmele Olympic. Adirekal namosipil, ah, ah, organizing committee, ma timpa lao namosipil guk, o realize aiigidel guk sesel ngesu il kita odarsa logi tiyal supplemental budget. Adirekal, eh, igel Blen Minzuna Chairman, il igel mora, igal bevir agency ra kavelment, imnosepe edel goongei mongmo, o bongela ta igidel supplemental budget, eh, emran. I, podo, oh, diregal, iri buktalik, nase se igidel guk mulle undasul, nase podo, investa udo dalmore sel embassy rigida ah, obisa ta siabal, ah, guk, ah, lo, odo, dingilul momerey, eh, direkal ulu, oramne witsa kanseinzu, set nase bol, taberey se igide, len walblaltien sa avaliora, ah, sel blael blegerlom arani, badabodo amesirini tiyal guk mallemel unified budget, ebol se edel malmungin subi, ma amount ringiye, eh, sa sel gukmaal sila ipenge, se el gutmaklin mo al surmungmasa el moaisi. Se igide Presidenta mal, al diswaga gukwa dimensioningi, malmootl mal, ah, moatinga lider sibert tiyal blind, ah, man wungil, ah, ora, ah, ah, instruction, wungil mergid, godamnosepe edel katmal aurore, mgoongu gukmaklit tiyal, ma dimnemre el time. El ang se edel gukmaobangala roha, porakwado isyon, ma igel gukmallemel al bangler, el aluyl, el klor mudat, nase godogu guknaotmaklit tiyal klor malale, sola President.
Sola Senator Aldabel. Ah, Senator Rudim.
President, malmso de, godasen, we all in agreement asit tiyal, tiyal amomrael. Diswaga, di stressa Mr. President, la say sera, asenet person, yang ngaria debate trawolole tiyal blind, ah, House mongitmakla urerele, mo kobosa ivao oldaswela Senate, godamnolo conference committee. Diswaga loaisa Mr. President, la say adamon moraro ndile, wa say ngara magdokola risa, say, eh, medikul gaigets, edega wungil omsodel. Ah, un godamnolo conference, imnolo agree, ah, milgu butasel udo dal 5.8 million al ma siabal, logiu okti da, asenet, ah, House el goongei, mumuntra obisa Presidento mongil ngai, logiu wungil communication on moraka, o ma lider sibert tiyal blind. And therefore, de godamobitsa ta igidel point, ah, mle kontension ra Senate, ra committee ga President, ah, sel FAA, ah, sedemle questionable balance sa cyclical reserve fund. Imnolo, tegidat tigirinu, la say tiang, milgarang, yamomasan, mga ra 1 million. Mr. Danganara Conference Committee, ta dilukmul wa say ngara amorinya ti'al, la tiyal FAA, gada achas ra cyclical reserve fund al morbab, godospeeringi lo maluurti, igidel supplemental budget. Ma sa Danganar se rogu, we were under regard, don't ask for stuff tiyal blind, la say can im confirm, omiringlo bongela Ministry of Finance, Special Director, imnolo otiya balance sa cyclical reserve fund at this time. Mutigida balance, Mr. President, maldir gumlei, as of May 19, 2025, a balance sa cyclical reserve fund, according to the Ministry of Finance, at 2,929,158. Se igida mlara Ministry of Finance, emelel al kabasengi. Es opposed, don mora 8 plus million, mlara April 4, 2025, FAA era datorio, es opposed, don moresel guk da tokortiro da tiyalo, la say 16 million a balance. Ma mle gansona, Mr. President, ra committee ga asenet, ah, un godamnolo trad trim daunatiyalo guul, adega albulwa say godamodish wispekt ra aral lo garara aurion. Godogu thimnolo gargikra o ur, ma wududela wai, en swada blakatak lo ur, mongidrogu ya mobaoshi siul baavier, mobaoshi siul lo ur, ma podo mirngil, boramra tetrela el tausul, o da pingal wududel wai. Ma tiagide, Mr. President, a balance, 2.9 million, angara 6 million a difference, rese tiro da la obisa datorio ra April, eh, daitan 14 million a difference, ah, tiro da wawolole tiyal blind, dakodekmo singupmalargernen. Iga dombrengasule arveklade, Mr. President, la say igagida differences, edigamalmol malngani, egidam ne gaigets rogu, lo murnya kanseinzu, se igidrogu wa say. Godopasar tiang, amgatmokla PUC, ma 411, ma igel korawal oruudulu. Egida malmorma louruol, si raper tiyal, lo misalali wai, len gidrogu ngartiang, ma adabelau rogu, ya gidil momdekmo singhartela o ur tiyal blue, telavalsel, em bagara do mitel udo, em waangarau rubatelle. Malaguktilgasal adam madangli, ebodo dagrogu dagangisera, sing bagara dolisi iltiya bluead, ma aratularulul emralme. Sola Mr. President.
Sola eh, Chairman Rudim, a godasura rogu, Senator Sangortiang, ah, merengasule, me understand da wa say tiagidi, amal ngarelela, Awaisan Minz, scrutinaysa igel rogu, aset rigida ngara omsalal belau, bosel blautakla do binima, merengasulem ra amen tro. Olaasa Senator Inabo.
Sula ngi, Mr. President, ak mal merengasulela, ah, Chairman Awaisan Minz, imnosepe edel tiyal, lwayal conference committee, il di mulle el alsil se otabadia, ah, tiyal CD1 ra budget, il House ma Senate ak goongeringi. President taqti, iswaga, ora mo explain na igel udo dal ma PPUC, ah, ah, ma tiyal budget ta otabadia 3,500,000 el mora PPUC. Mong, tiyal udo da angmas al ma PUC, len igel, el ngesu el mora aral aral ma masuer, almootl mas. Mong, igel subsidyl mora PPUC, almootl mas, mora aral ma masuer, almootl mas by 28%. Mong, malmootl mo kloa ngesu el mora, aral aral ma masuer. Mong, igel lifeline subsidy program el PUC, amnastob, len lamote wudud, aikey almootl morani. Mong, tuva da 600,000 el mora subsidy program. Mle 250,000, ya PUC, wa say mlamote gaigal udo, damang ngiread elmootl, loltova da udo dal mora, o eral bol lolngaseo ra tirigel ngara subsidy program, mong, mle increase sel 250,000, el mo 600,000. Ah, adirega, ah, ah, Senate ma Houseala, lilutel reinstater sel tensions, el mora first 500 kilowatt hours, ah, mlaringa change el morani, ndigidam lilutel reinstater ngi, mong sepel al kontinu se igidel program, mong klo el ngesu ba mora arala dengi maralma. Mong, aiigidang ngesu il girela dengi maralma, ediregal ngara alsil tiyal budget bill. Ah, amendment, el morsel la'ra PPUC, el girela omuruul, el arala dengi, maralma. Ma tiyal amendment, blalgey ngier ngi, ah, Senate ma House, akmulba say. Ah, PUC sel boloruu la ngidil, el changes, el mora angidil, el arala services ra PUC, tarif schedule, ngidil, il, il charge, el PUC, ah, charge ra okyagar ngi, eng ngirela piwal mo goongey era, aiigidil, el changes, eh, apiwa, sel bol gangey aikey, endiga sepel el goongey, al sugum, andiga albol, lol tirakar sel Administrative Procedure Act. Mong girela piwa loais ra wai rogu, eng may oldaswela wai, ediregal, sa nga taal, el olbir alulauel, il make changes, el morsel, el tarif, el piwa, goongel, ra PUC, il mo charge, ngira okyak. O bongela tiang, adiregal wa say, ah, aiel, ngidil, ngidil arala dengi maralma masuer, el milngag ngier ngi, el mo urior, after January 1, 2025. Adega bol urior, al sugum, andiga albol, mangag ngier ngi, lol tirakr Administrative Procedure Act. Eh, el almong, ya piwa, dicaspel, el goongey, angidi lomlod, el mora arala services ra PUC. Alak al, el katmok, il, aiigidel, el changes in writing. Igal, el rate, el, el change, agirel ultuy ra igel, financial report ra PPUC, il mla audited, lol tirak ra gagas, magas. Eh, igel audited financial statement, agirelo olta igel rogu il garagarnela PUC, ma igel rogu il operating expenses ra PUC, ra ikal, mlamo marigarak, el igegidel, lo ur, asepel mo ulturinga PUC, MO, O change, ah, arala, ah, services rini. Mong, kodokor omes ra babilngela Chairman rapport da PUC, il mulle, el korra, amle, omdas wa say ta igidel sectional, amote dhasi el mrael, nditigidel ngartial, luldasel mulla, mong, yes, emralto da udo dal ma PUC, ndindiregal, olbiragula, omdas asap PUC girel mo, lol tirak la standard, ma wungil process, emerqonge mo, oltovda, a changes el mora tarif schedule. Ma, akti, kamanter se igid, eh, direga, merengasulela, ah, Chairman Awaisan Minz, al girela, ah, cyclical reserve fund balance, sel domeser sel blel, al sendar ngia finance el may, eng, FY 2020, mle include ra a surplus, el 10.9 million, etiyal surplus, atwa da sel tovda audited financial report ra Republik Erbela. Endiregal, altova da surplus FY 2021, FY 2022, FY 2023, ma FY 2024, andiregal tovda audited financial report. Mong, ndisel domes, aiigel rogu il appropriations, ah, lo ukra, alsel tiyal, amlamaynas ra balance. Aiigel rogu il appropriations ra FY 2022, 2023, ma 2024. Ma 2025, len ngaria RPL 11-7, al diregal, igel udo dal tilovda appropriations, angara, alsel tiyal balance. Mong, tiyal balance, sel 7.9 million, addirga move, ndirga kal, di ga kadadul, wa say tiagid, leka da mangila, aiigel surplus, el met move. Eh, domes aiigel fourth quarter financial report, eng ngaria surplus FY 2022, FY 2023, FY 2024. Mong, akmal merengasulela, Chairman Awaisan Minz, imnosepil, imteli information, ending, hm, ngiread el kloa nugu, del wa say kloa balance ra a reserve fund, el, il godasen, laste el mo exceed ra 16 million, eh, igel surplus ra, FY 2024, ma FY 23, ma FY 2022, angara 16 million. Sula ngi, Mr. President, ti'al.
Sula Senator Inabo. Senator Mariu.
Um, sola President, ak merengasule arveklade, komle sibert tiyal budget, tsa ngara House, lemno da gata, leklo bongel, ibukmalangia. Uldulaga President, tulbongela President, ta Republik al ma siabal. Dickma siabal, de diregal goradi ngara interneto, misa session. Ak dirgalwa, amle, emailwa, kregaswa say komdirgamru ra report, akuseng mal giregal mortiya session, elangale. Giregal morani, ima gat tiagidel supplemental budget. Akmal merengasule, Presidente, se igidol gorangia Inabo. Se igidongara page, 11 tiyal report, el monsado, se igidel, walboy da igel tarifel milgatmokra after January, January 25, January 1st, 2025. Merasel deboida igegidel, tiyal, leisle isur, wa say girel boyda igegidel, tarifel milgatmokla, emotirakla, IPA sel longatmokla tarif, umsepel a olbil, ganyang, ah, seringi ra igegidel tarif. Resultaim, Presidente, sel debort tiyale, aiigel subsidy. Il asegidel subsidyl mora, mora aral masuer, Presidente. Iga dmo, uspe aiigegidel, besel, aral aral masuer, se igidim no urur ra February 1st. Ma kora di, umsel wa say, igalil blalbol goran, el sum godoboida tiang, emrgoy mo, bertovda subsidyl mo aiigegidel, aral aral mulwali ngilas. Ding se igid, adiregal mo, o bongela tiyal, tiyal gukconcernar ngage, President, wa say, godmo, bekeltamnol ngasa arala, aral menga, ma, ah, suwer, godmo, subsidyaisi rini. Na vaigiridol urur, o bongela peacein, morani wungil tretelal, lo, orul, oni aral aral masuer, el ogia wungil tretetal, guktiyalsan, manlimisel, mo klo, mo kting, el momiringla arak. Mong mo dyakado, tiagid, umsel reling, gukmasu biarad, el gukotiril, mo dyakado, gida, mol, governmenta moltoy. Isel gumeset tiang, itiang, awadu bladu, psala isin, sa PUC il dimru, lewa say, subsidy. Subsidy. Akwa di, umsel se igidel, ndiregal, tsugum tiyal, se igidel, sel ngara page 11 tiyal report, wa say, da, aiigel, aiigegidel, milgatmokra after January 1st, xalbi boyda. Maksen, alsum godan, se gungu, gungu, andiga algukholbolkora, ma anayim, ta igidot, tabadale tiyal subsidy. Alsum godon, namo uspe aiigegidel, ngia arala gialonsera, aral masuer, ra, nar se igidel, arala rate el milgatmokra fev, efektibra February 1st. Akwa di, gera se igidel, el tsugum ngokoro, ngokoro, gumeserigodokora, ngad, ngad bladrali, tiyamuruli, tiyal guk, ah, tiyal legislatoringil, wa say godoboidel se igidel tarif, emorur, bongela PUC. Aiigel milgatmokra after January 1st. Ma kora, se di, mulya garinge, President, tendin, daksal, le wungil tokora, ngadrala, almemdesang, ra weera, podo, ah, gunguttiang, ngigida, adrala, akadpsa, tiyala, Inabo.
Leka 1st, kildawalala, el mora Senator Mlayre, mora Inabo, Senator Mlayre. Sula Chairman, ku, untira short recess. Ah, short recess. Sessiona mora order. Eh, Senator Mlayre.
Sula, Mr. Presidente, kada, mlaro risa, say, mlaringisel standing question ra, ah, floor leader, il girela, aiigel lo ur, ngara, ah, committee report, ta page 15 ra, committee report, wa say, altsugum goda, godongasel amendment, el mootl reverse ra, ah, tarif ra PPUC, mora igel January rate, engaram godospe egal higher rate subsidy. Agundasen, se igidel, amlamub lotakle, floor leader. Tiya, o bongela ngegidel, ulgu, mkuamese sel, original longit, emene 960,000, ne sel, il gukneul, the wisdom, ra House of Delegates, amne increase rini by 250,000. Emerqonge, godoki langing, gukobongela, igel amendment, sel, se igidel amendment, wa say, da, godotungisel language ra piwa, ma igel ulsa da, Senator Inabo, ma sel amendment, il ngia amne originator, ah, committee ra ipiul, el reverse sa tarif el mora January rate. Etiagidel, egagidel rate, ngartial, mumesel, el 0, 0837 cents, aralma, ma point 01192 ra suwer. Egagidel, igel gukora, mlo ngia common understanding ra, ah, conference committee, gadosis. Unitra wungil understanding ra floor, ma support rini, godamoni, sola.
Narya, amen, Senator Tabelwal.
Sorry, President, ak mal di, ngate'al, merengasaul girer tiang, len, ah, eligida, mlartiang, emrael, korra, mangamim, osenge del, minnako, say, ateak, ngargir. Bi tiagidela alsil, se gatan ngartiang. Yak merengasulela lider sibra, tiyal blind, ma House, ma Chairman, ra House, ma Chairman rigid. Imnosepe edel, masa tiel lurorore, chel, laba geler tiang, imnosepe edel, simingi, osenge del moroi, da la siabal. Osigida, amne aral aral belau. Osigadu amne rara dal bela. Ba albongel bela el bha. Bitiang ngartel omesetel ndiakal versioner house ndiakal versiona senate. Versioner gi. Ma president. E versioner gi ma president. Motiguiya adrel alchil sel bu ra PUC. Ya osma kambala ra game ngariya udo. Egida amnosobi ya omnitela udo. Ngara ay gal do dengi wasen ngari. Ul demukre sel udo dal mora school wasa sumgudungu udo dal mora school girigali adra naakli ra ngalga. Andiakal tettabe adel moma arahodu tooi. Ndiga algire. Siangar ledel ngartel wasegadu gudamotmokla gudamotmokla. Andi gudakar gigi omnitela udo duway. Ega udu diradu adu ngara balloon mildot tri. Ndika dilu du dede tuladu onkort teang. Ma tulis seigidel managasaul wasi. Sel do bakal luring. Ebo da abang. Gudukutmukla omil uror. Moru adil gira uspe egi. E managasaul giris.
Senator Tabulwan. Senator Mario.
Toya kiregal mal dimnasule arbekladu president. Maral korra teamneru dunga momringa. Dimne roidu ma kio ulmasaygal. El babir akwaset teal kalsan man momringa conference andi. Kele da airport el dukwasenda aktrayda mulu ra conference committee report akosenda akamal girigal mo partak teang. Mal giradel mo masaygal. Urele olbi ra ulal mo ngusel. Mal merengasule mlosbe il korra amne malare dal dimnetalchil tsukum. Se telaringi gidetel nar teakamit report. Sula president.
Sula. Gloride. Amodigaga comment, senator Malay.
Mister president kamsula teale. President aktmal di mo kertale managasulem. Ma leader receiver gau. El noo uli. Teal malmeringa lungulamna bladoiti. Ediregal managasule arkaliks rigidra sel vital blay ra House of Delegates. Tokuni sel consensus rigidel. Lutobdi sel. Five point eight million negirel mora momara blay ra siabal. El ngi adodengi waseng blangmas el mo seven point four million. Te alugum lotogo president. Kodam altob da udo denwa domara four hundred fifty seven square meter blay. Ondivay der ngi sel udo de medel ngara sixteen thousand square meter teal blay domare. Mal merengasule arbekladu uspe edel. El ol. Difernilo wase bolurile dal utromesengi. Ediregal president mal malmerasule la chairman ra ways and means. Ediregal kaliks rigidra house. El mlosbe iril mood tal bi in state ay gal. Language ra section nine. Sel amendment tra section twenty seven ra RPL eleven dash forty seven. El talgibalosis ba language ra internal controls ra procurement tra aldo duway. Ah kodamte ngi wase sel original appropriation ra eleven dash forty seven. Ah totali ngil betia. Sel requirement ra adu momoitau du way mindiakal bolol tirakra il ula procurement. Eh president akuma rang eh blangara procurement el mal magategatel time mlosi. No matter how good onga az. El olaba udo duway. Giril ngariya tetelale ngoltoob da udo duway. Giril ol tirakra la. Sel di ngua wala blank chegal ngul molliyare imala adu mang. Momongoiterni uli diaka controls madega ngaranga. Akuma rang waseng diakal omil practice. Ediakal omil president se. Mister president makulgit tulasig. Ah medo muurel alves edoral mong. El akadu luto entretena waivers ra procurement lo. Mal digigide president aktman sula.
Sula senator Malayre. Ngariya imol, senator na ngamura.
Sula ya teale. Acting president. Kondiak. A comment a committee report anding unsoal ngutel teale. E managasule chairman regi. Eno tia akabesel senator anding lamomagategatel dai dai. Enong diaka sonso bisosis rigidel adu bela. Eptoka do uspe ma sawad anding. Aktmal managasulele ediregal managasule leader ship mlosbe edel. Osikrolele. Eh. Ekamapel obongel mortyal consensus malugutyal agreement la dalon ledigid ma adu raha house. Di. One ra togo il korra. Siapokthurti alfirst el exercise eh. Eh mister president I think ang maklotutelela. Ah information, information is power. Among aktiregal korra mo concern sel diga on the eleventh hour malubeng. Forty minutes ago hadumangi baby ra balance regal leather presume. Eh cloa karo sa. Ay gal eh. Cloa drastic ay gal eh. Value malubeng ra oor ra for example a cyclical reserve fund. Mang I hope eh. Eh mister president lasi. Ah. I guess ngakling sublet lasi. Ah. Amongila next set ngaya sal malkumakail information malakad. Bodomadu ediregal malongi trasi. Ah. Ah. Al ngariya udo. Talputoka udo ediregal sepedel kuk. Diakabilkul didespendrogu. Malu bedolar alone alone edipin bulharawa baby natogor appropriation. Seigidakoradi runguleki I hope pasent sepedel. Governmental gi dam. Olkuk gundas wasent sebel kukse pasesera udo. Ediregal make gurengasule adu raha House of Delegates sel diregal ngilu sel. Three fifty. January fifty thousand el mututungin ancela. Ay gal eh budget el giril a. Ado gu malubeng computers ra. Servers ma equipments ra civil service pension plan. Ah magatatal obisi olaba mal pututel regord ra rogul retirees ma rogul adu uragablement. Ediregal ngutal teale eh gurengasule. Nigigide mister president emasual managasule la chairman regi. Clorengar regi. Obongedel melalchilts sula.
Sula senator na ngamura. Senator Suginu.
Mister president, I'm going to go see my grandma Albert Cloud. Mister president, I'm with the other ideas. Start a game. For us, I go to the committee regidel girila tegidel tooi. Ela girit teal maldi dorideis. Gudamo start a games. Leader shipil gilinga imo gud. Host ra game. Aktmal di mo omteera. Act chairman ra teley. Organization committee ra games. Ediregal mo omteera tegel rogul adilitsel ngel bela. Elamte erigid. Rapropriationer tegirila game. Emal mo merengasulem ra leader shipir gau. Mister president, I didel altime. Acting president. Obiril act chairman ra ways and means regid. Ma aral ngalela House of Delegates. Alkan pluwini kuongel kuasegigidel. Bladatibie bladatibie al kabasengei. Amo ngosu trirar ngaliged. Organization committee lukutmakli sel mandey tel. Lukukalingilu el mo ngotmokra teaklo. Aktmal di mo omteera actigigidel kuk. Karatogora sports ra Balwa. Emal di gurengasule la leader shipir bela. Utudinga president rigirila. Anewil uror balkatmakli merela. Sula ngi mister president.
Sula senator Suginu. Akor ngari di yari imol. Eh issue eh chairman. El. Omdaseng tarigel uul madamdo olaya ader teal. Teal. Teal process. Eh alsela one hour. Seigidel issue ah. Asabail mo obrao. Makulgit tulasintangel. Msa beledimo smoothie ah sel section nine. Il giril sel udo dra compact. Ma local revenue. Eh kumdasa senator Inabo amalmay makulgit ra. Senator madi eh Inabo msel dimo botaklima adra blubolorin wasen. Setra issue tulmeseng. Masadra swap. Yemo subesen put you on the spot. Alrok esangir ebangal ending. Sel blangia amendment ral mori. Ma olmak.
Oye mister pres- mister president kamsula. Um sel. Section nine ah. Ah away el. Obisa president adiregal ulu lo oduruklia babin ngel may. Eh. Eh kandengi da. Ah logotel mo implement ra a compact teidel. Eh compact two agreement. Eh mlor ba ba udo dra compact. Mlorniya twenty million. El general operations ma fifteen million el compact trust fund. Mang ay gal ludodra compact ay giril dimora held ma education ma security. Mang. Masera totura budget FY twenty twenty four. Hmm. Ngwaya talgibel mlo. Ngaryowa ay gal. Eh allocation ra. Angara budget. Il giril ay gagidel tril ministries mang mlogiradel. El change ay gal udo dal funding el mora education assistance. El mo compact trust fund six million. Mang waya da swap. Gudong maya a compact trust fund el mo fund ra education assistance. Emargonge ma igel lo local funding el mlarra. Education assistance. El mal mo fund ay gal. Eh baby ra. Ah budget. Il gi da ultoob da udo dal. Giril ding diakal. Diakal udo dal qualified uspe a a compact trust fund. Mang waya dida swap ay gal tablo sources of funding. Eh make sure. Eka da comply. Gudotiraq la ay gal. El besel requirement tra implementation ra compact trust fund. Compact trust fund ma general. Sel general appropriation el twenty million. Compact trust fund el fifteen million.
Senator Inabo. Senator Yerbaluips.
Sura teale mister president. Kuramkitasel lastel madadu adaku ah malna. Move togolongi togo anding. Ngania one ra partel adiregal sodi. Engari sel. Ediregal ngara section nineteen. A debt service. El masadra two point three seven six million. Kyangadiregal. Beser abeser compact review agreement. Idangania udo dal dolay. Qaber ay gal. Belset. Ding dimnagalsal clear ra time. Signer sel agreement tulbongel ra blu ramregel waseng ral belset asedal dolabalharaw. Mangania two point three seven six million. El kuk mora baby ra. Abang. Which are not ADV. And others and mora. Ah abang ra Taiwan. And based on the new compact review agreement ay gal gagidal qualified. Ma tsugum ndiakal revert teal udo. Eng wadalu se sel two point three six million. Mo diakal sedal uspe erngi ases will be put back in the trust fund. Teadiregal kiri gal la timing erngi. Manian deadline and blaset. Aguk government ra blu ramregel mendiregal ulsisbert team waltsim a kli seigidel. El taraku kadalamom dangli. La ing requirement tra ay gal besel udo. El aragampak msa gal wadimgatak kisi. Eh. Another thing I wanted to point out eh mister president aktmal urengasule arbekladu. La senate magaliks rigidra house rigirila ay gal udo dal. Uspe Ministry of State. El mainling mora ay gal diplomatic mission rigid. El ngara Hawaib. Guam. Ah and most especially a UN mission. El namhala mo klonga alen. Otakara AOSIS. Blur bela chairman ra AOSIS el ala time. Actually sell first floor ra. Diplomatic mission rigid ra el arnamo host sel office ra AOSIS. AOSIS is association of small island states. Medel seventy blura blura. Ra blulath. Membera UN ah. Adi imo chairman erngi. Act chairman erngi abulur benam. Masello ngadudu ambassadorship ra UN. Mo omtega gagidel seventy blura blu. Markrol ngaral ay giril support ra mission rigid ma. Malurengasule arbekladu girila. A supporter teal supplemental budget. Most especially ay gal line items. Nora Ministry of State. Ya understand tulaseng ngariya issue ra contention. Il giril sel embassy ra blura siabal. And I agree. Maybe now is not the right time. And the right amount of money to spend. To spend ra embassy ra blura siabal. Egida diakal giril el stop. El osigat teale invest. Ra building regid ra siabal. In Taiwan. In Washington DC. Padana amarara diplomatic mission rigid ra New York. Menal time baby ra udo dal doltoob. Amo harara. Law mortgage payment sel embassy. It's not rent dal luci. Investment ra blur bela. Matamela blur bela. Go kela blur bela. Ma mal agree ra position ra countries. Di melagadu lucite sel long term vision. Ay gal diplomatic mission rigid ngara kela. Blur bela. We need to own them. We shouldn't be renting the rest. We stole. Mal masaurat teale mister president.
Sula senator whoops. Senator Udim.
President mal masaulden. Nga kungit selle muligari question or clarify seigidel eh. Etoka ra compact ma. A requirement seringi gagal comply. Mister president aktirgal bisualal emphasize ra. Sel importance ra participation ra rogul adu ngat teal blay. Ma house ma adu bela rogul girin madengi gal tooi. Teal me hapen na mister president au ma senate angilbetisel. Wasel nakam legislator backward. Because eng a committee amlo identifying waseng. Bambalengasule la president admit. Eh lakatak waseng mle error. Makadawa appreciate tra transparency seigidel acknowledgement tra. Awal dimnagakamplarasi RA. Eng then di unma committee angilbeti ulamdasasalakalungil dal uspe la olbi la kulaw. Ratified algitmakli. Eh tra recommendation aseng gagal legislator forward. Aknadits ra mistake a move forward that some agree. And direct that some gurungil backward uspe la olbi la kulaw. But the complicity. Of something and maybe to bring a audit finding wase. Problem dangli adogadig. Disel intention ada galol malda intention of natural improvement. Ding either way either way goes. There again it stands for to be audited. Kadumom sang. Adi kuringitri mister president wase way gagidetretal agida diblagatak lool. And. Ay giril ay gal agency ra government el moblagatak report taugere. Mar bekladu lobulutel blu ouklarwatel boy. Ay giril aware and most participate tra ay kanamilti. No matter how small dir bekladu deserve. Ay gal information ngara government el morti. Sula mister president.
Sula senator Udim. Sumendiga senator Basilius.
Tamla madadu arate presidenta senate kamsulangrat teale ngahaku latingakal talakurak musesay. Emlamu eleven oklager el algob singi. Bisualal dimrenasaul ra. Ay gal tablon. Al adra ways and means el no urongalia conference. Kutmakli teal uror. Ay gal roguin tulamdas will girila. A four A RIM ay gal roguin korontilti al blay ra senate mlosuril al gudmokla. Amlam gudmokla. Gudamrengasule ra adu raha house ediregal merengasule da roguin. Betoka ision ding. Gudomdas wasediregal mo ngotmokla. Tidolngit tulasigadu ngertiang. Msa be el marail. Yo kuk domes regid ra klukuk mangyawa sel ay gagidu kuk baby ra swadu ngotmokla. Betoka adiregal information ulswadu may. Akti olngit eh merengasule arbekladu. Eh presidenta senate eh. Four A RIM ah. Amora amasil bela ma mora rubugul bela. Subsidy mora PPUC. Ediregal teal togo ra. A cyclical reserve fund mendiregal koramlomgatakling ngara report and actiregal satisfy tersel. Language sel ngara alsel. Tidolngit tulasigere ma kukuri. It's a little, it's a little, it's a little. I'm going to clean it, the president, the Senate, I'm going to clean it.
So, Senator Basilius, since. Um, the last one, Senator Telams, I'm going to clean it, I'm going to say. I'm going to say. Senator Telams.
Hello, Mr. President. President, I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to clean it. It's going to do it. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. Specialization, I'm going to do it. It's a bit, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to expect the essence, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. It's not, it's not, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to clean it, Mr. President. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to clean it. See, it's a bill. I'll take it, it's late, I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. I get both houses. It's a bill, prevent. At the end, my question, it's going to do it. I'm going to say, it's. The visa special prosecutor, Mr. President. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. Then, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. There are conditions, a compact free association. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. While I'm going to give it. At the level, at the level, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. It's a bill, prevent, I get it. Um, at the end, I'm going to do it. It's going to do it, I'm going to speak it. I'm going to clean it, the leader, Mr. President. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. The visa, CAO, I'm going to clean it. Let's say, I'm going to take it, I'm going to take it. The layer, the Senate, my House of Delegates. It's a little, I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. It's a little, I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to have a blue, I'm going to do it, I get it. I'm going to transparent, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. Uh. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. And meet any of the. If I get it, Mr. President, I'm going to do it. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. My chairman, I get it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. It's not. It's a bit compromise, I'm going to clean it, I'm going to do it. I get it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to clean it, Mr. President.
Senator Telams, I'm going to say. It's going to be, I'm going to tell. Uh, conference committee report number twelve, that's one, do I? It's going to be. But I'm going to see, I'm going to see, conference committee report. Floor leader.
Mr. President, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I am ten, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. During reading, it's CD one. I'm going to pass it, the Senate bill twelve plus twenty five, ST three, HD two, CD one. I'm going to do it.
So, it's the motion, the last, I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it.
Senate number twelve plus twenty five, ST three, HD two, CD one. Bill for not to authorize an appropriate additional sums from the National Treasury. For channel operations and capital improvements of the Republic of Palau. For fiscal year twenty twenty five through amendments to our PPL eleven plus thirty seven, as amended. To amend the source of funds for debt repayment in fiscal year twenty twenty four. Through amendments to our PPL eleven plus thirty one, as amended. To account for the terms of the compact review agreement with regard to use. Of the debt consolidation fund.
Yeah, that's, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it, I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, twenty twenty five. The loss pair, amendment, PPL eleven plus thirty seven, I'm going to do it. It's a little, the source of funds, it's going to get it, debt repayment, fiscal year twenty twenty four. It's going to do it, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. It's a little, it's a little. Do the compact review agreement, it's going to do it, debt consolidation fund. Yeah, that's, I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it.
So, it's not, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to clean it, it's. The committee report, and then I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. It's the bill, open it. Yeah. Uh, I'm going to do it. Senator, Senator Basilius.
Oi.
Senator Cecilil Aldabet.
Oi.
Senator Rukwai, Kwa Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Brian Mlayray.
Oi.
Senator Sixfoot Bay Nakamura.
Oi.
Senator Mark Ebra Rudim.
Oi.
Senator Gassugi El Tapsungino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oi.
Senator Salvador Sadoy Telams.
Oi.
Senator Mason, you're about to.
Oi.
Floor leader, Gray Mariur.
Oi.
Acting President Stevenson Chekwartey.
Oi.
The president, I'm going to do it, twelve years, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, the supplemental budget, I'm going to do it, twelve years. I'm going to do it, the Senate. What do I say? For the services. I'm going to do it, session, I'm going to do it. Floor leader.
Mr. President, I'm going to do it. Uh, build calendar. So, I'm going to do it, communication, I'm going to have a house, I'm going to clean it, I'm going to do it. Uh, item seven, replace the. It's odd, communication twelve plus twenty, my it's odd, communication twelve plus twenty one. The twelve plus twenty, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. It's CD one, supplemental budget. Yeah, twelve plus twenty one, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. Resolution, I'm going to do it.
So, it's the motion, I'm going to do it, it's going to be, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it.
I'm going to do it, the president, I'm going to do it. I read twelve, the resolution, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it.
I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it.
Senator Resolution number twelve plus forty six. The Senate Resolution, confirming the presidential appointment. Of Mr. Leventer Young to serve as a member of the board of directors. Of the, of Palau Public Utilities Corporation for a term of three years. The resolution, I'm going to. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to do it, the board of directors, the PPUC, I'm going to do it. I'm going to tackle the acting president, Stevenson Chekwartey, by request.
So, it's the Senate Resolution eleven, I mean, twelve plus forty six. It's a question, I'm going to commit a EPU, the chairman, he is Senator Mario. Floor leader.
I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. President, I'm going to do it, item thirteen, introduction of bills. Item fourteen, introduction of resolutions. I'm going to, miscellaneous. Item fifteen, I get communications, I'm going to, miscellaneous communication, I'm going to. Miscellaneous, miscellaneous communication, twelve plus one sixty one. My miscellaneous communication, twelve plus one sixty two. We've noted, I'm going to do it, item sixteen, miscellaneous business.
I'm going to do it, item sixteen, miscellaneous business, I'm going to do it, miscellaneous, I'm going to do it. I'll open. Senator Inabo.
President Kamsulang, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it. Oh, oh, I'm going to do it, it's a little. I'm going to be a, I'm going to do it. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to do it. It's going to do it, I'm going to do it. About a round thirty, the sewer and water. I'm going to do it. Yeah, PUC, I'm going to do it, yeah, payment plan. It's not, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. And I'm going to clean it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. The payment plan, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to do it, Sunday. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. The more, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to go to the, I'm going to do it. So, I'm going to, Mr. President.
So, I'm going to, Senator Inabo, when the chairman, EPU, I'm going to say. Ma. I'm going to sign the council, the money. Senator Rudin.
President, I'm going to say. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. Then, that's well, PUC, it's not. Proclamation, I'm going to do it, climate change, more solar power. I'm going to change the rate, the more solar power, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. This is the United Nations, Mr. President, I'm going to do it. A human right. It's not going to be, it's not going to be, it's not going to be. It's not going to be, it's not going to be. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I get it, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. It's not, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. It's not, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. A natural color, I'm going to, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it, Mr. President. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. And I'm going to, I'm going to, Mr. President, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. A human right. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. She is, I'm going to clean it, Mr. President, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. And the president, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. So, Mr. President.
So, the senator Rudin. Senator Basilius.
Directly. President, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it, since I'm going to do it, it's you. I'm going to, I'm going to say. I'm going to, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. A PUC, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. It's a state owned enterprise, I'm going to do it. It's a tax, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. At least, a PUC, it's not going to be a tax. Say, I got it, the director, the clown. The evidence, I'm going to. Our customers, I'm going to tax the payment, I'm going to. A PPUC. It's going to do it, I'm going to do it.
So, Senator Basilius, I'm going to. I'm going to clean it, Senator Rudin, I'm going to clean water after a lot of passing it. I'm going to clean it, I'm going to clean it. But the miscellaneous, I'm going to do it. Summandiya, floor leader.
I'm going to do it, Mr. President, I'm going to do it.
Maria, announcement, announcement, I'm going to do it. Um, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, appointment, I'm going to do it. I'm going to extend the special session one day. I'm available, in case, I'm going to address it. The appointment, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I extend the special session one more day.
One day.
One day.
One day.
One day until. The other do, it's going to do it, additional days. Subject called.
I'm going to. I'm going to do it.
I'm going to say.
I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it.
Say. It's going to be, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. It's going to be. I'm going to do it, subject to call.